Is on the actions of the minutes. Um, so our first vote will be the action of the minutes of the open meeting, May twentieth, two thousand twenty. So I need a motion. Does anyone have any questions about or um?
Kathy, can we can we do these all together or do you need them separate?
So, okay, I have to do one by itself, then I can do two, three and four by themselves, five by itself and then six.
So you just said all basically that's all of them by themselves, or did you mean two, three and four can be combined?
Yes.
Okay, and I I trust you if you need separate motions, we'll just start with one. I would move to uh that we approve one.
Alright, so Dan approves the um open many open minute minute meetings of May twenty, two thousand twenty. Second. Alright, any corrections or anything? No? Okay, so this is a roll call. So Kathleen Howland.
Yes.
Uh Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Okay. So, Dan, you want to keep on going?
I would. I would move items two, three and four, the executive session minutes of December seventh, twenty nineteen, March eighteen, twenty twenty and April fifteen, twenty twenty.
Okay. So Dan Kalenda made the motion and Paul Bucka second. Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
A question, are these being retained? Um, or released?
Released.
Released. Okay, yes.
Um Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Uh Lauren Bailey?
Abstain.
Um and alright, so Lauren abstained. Um and Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, I would move five, which is the action on subcommittee meeting uh minutes for October thirty, twenty nineteen, May seven, twenty twenty and March ten, twenty twenty.
No, second.
Okay, so Dan Kalenda made the motion, Paul Bucka second, um Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Abstain.
And Dan Kalenda?
Yes. Kathy, if I may, I would move that we approve the retained executive session minutes of September eighteen, twenty nineteen, October sixteen, twenty nineteen, November twenty, twenty nineteen and December eighteen, twenty nineteen.
That's a proven release, Dan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
Alright. Alright, so Dan Kalenda made the motion, Paul Bucka second, so Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Abstain.
And Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so educational policy, there is none at this time, and then um the first part of new business is to interview the candidates for vacancy of the Northborough um seat that's available for this coming year.
And Kathy, do I have this correctly, that only the Northborough members would be voting?
Oh, yes. But any other members can be part of the of the interview process?
Question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um so Greg, is Karen with us?
So Karen is with us, so welcome Karen.
Hi Karen.
Hi, just had to unmute myself here. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I want to welcome you to our meeting. Um thank you for applying for the vacancy for the town of Northborough. Um and we just want you to start with um if you can share your background and why you're interested in the position.
Uh sure, um I'm just gonna read um the statement that I prepared, if that's okay. Um sure, good evening. Um it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I'm a seventeen year resident of Northborough. And I'm proud to raise my family in a district with such an excellent school system. I've been involved in our community and schools in a variety of different ways. I've been a member of the Peaslee School Council. I've assisted Peaslee grade five teams with a STEM grant for technology learning, uh back when my kids were in that school. I've been a T-ball coach for five years, a Northborough U soccer coach, I'm a founding member of the Northborough Town Common Committee. And I've also been a workshop presenter at the Northborough Junior Women's Club STEM Summit for three years. I'm a former high school teacher and district school administrator. I know the various ins and outs of how high schools work, the schedules, the AP exams, the extracurricular clubs and sports teams. Grade expectations, electives, lunch schedules, bathroom passes or lack thereof. Senior privileges, pep rallies and much more that comes along with being a high school student and or staff member. I have lived it as a teacher and now I'm reliving it as the mother of two teens who attend Algonquin. I'm seeking the vacant seat on the Northborough Regional, Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee as I truly would be an educated and informed voice for our community. I've attended our town meetings for many years and watched as the town manager and superintendents, Charles Gabron, Christine Johnson, and hopefully Mr. Martino will get his chance soon. Um compliment each other and work in tandem year after year to bring fiscally responsible budgets to the town. While still keeping educational priority priorities that move us forward. I'm a strong advocate for at um for encourage, I'm a strong advocate for educating our next generation of thinkers and doers. I'm a strong advocate for allowing and encouraging teachers to think outside the box and inspire their learners. In the last several weeks and months, we have seen that our educators and our students are capable of doing great things. I would like nothing more than to work with you, the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee, the administrators and teachers at Algonquin, so that you can continue to do these great things and more. Um so with that said, that's my statement. Um I believe you have your resume and and I think many of you know me from past um uh interviews and and times that I've been at 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 meetings, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Hey, I do Kathy.
Okay, go ahead.
Um Karen, thank you very much for the time and you put into your application uh to the school committee and also very impressively, the work that you have done with the Northborough Schools and also the town and attending the town meetings, so thank you very much. Um you said that you were a district in your letter that you were a district administrator in the Dudley-Charkton Regional School District. And um if you could highlight um a challenge that you had encountered in a regional district and what the outcome was?
Sure, I mean there's, well, I I think one of the highlights um that has really kind of presented itself and that we really kind of helped us come together over the last several months has definitely been the fact that um we are Regional School District Dudley and Charlton and we um had some we we always have curriculum issues with not being able to kind of be in unison on where we are with our curriculum. Um that's been highlighted for years, our teachers struggle to always, you know, they want the individual um individualized approach, um but with the with COVID actually recently, that's been one of our greatest um strengths is overcoming that. And really kind of putting together one grade one lesson for no um, I was gonna say Northborough Southborough, for Dudley and Charlton. One grade eight lesson for everybody. Um and we are a little bit different than Northborough Southborough because we're full regional, um where Northborough is K to eight, Southborough is K to eight. And then Algonquin comes together, but I think um that's our, that's been definitely a challenge that has been presented itself in the past and we've really um worked hard together and our teachers really collaborated, especially over technology, which is something that they're not used to doing either. Um and and they're really shown true over the last several months, so that's been great to see.
Thank you, and I think it really was a a challenge, thinking that you didn't have any warning that this was happening before pre-planning, it just was on laps, came on your desk and you had to um, you know, turn the uh tables around and see what you what you could do and thank you for your response, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
This is uh Sean O'Shea. I just have one question. Do you see any challenges? I believe one of the school committee members in Dudley Charlton is an administrator at Algonquin. And it would re-reverse the roles. Do you see any challenges in that uh situation?
No, I don't. Um actually Kathy, I I think I saw her name online, um and she's in the meeting. Her and I have had actually some collaborative discussions. I think it would be um, she knows my children, um it, I think it would be fine. I'm not, I'm really not out for any anything adversarial. I just want to serve my community.
Thank you.
Yep.
So can I just ask you a quick question? This is Kathy. Um our meetings are the third Wednesday of every month. Will that be something that um works for your schedule?
Yep.
Okay, and sometimes there's more?
Yes, like we have, so.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, this is Kathleen Howland. Uh welcome to the meeting and and it's wonderful that you want to serve the community. And in reading your uh Vita, I noticed that there were a lot of references to STEM and you noted that you had been a part of the STEM program here in town with the Junior Women's League, which is so impressive. And there was some references to the arts, but I wasn't clear on your advocacy for the arts from your curriculum and I would appreciate you illuminating that, please.
Sure, well, the district position that I was um in was the STEAM Director, and so that was Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math. Um quite honestly, um that was a brand new position five years ago, um and quite honestly, that's to be quite honest and fair, that's why I'm leaving. The position was cut um from the budget. Um and I'm have another position that I'm moving forward to um in August. Um but with the arts, we have a very, I I did it quite honestly, we tried to blend that, it was just, we had when I got there, we didn't even have Google accounts for the kids, so we really had to focus on the T first of STEM. And quite honestly, allow, doing that allowed us to successfully pull off our remote learning um when the rug got pulled up up from us in in March. Um and working over that the last five years. So basically, I worked on a lot of tech, I worked on the science, the new SSTE standards. Um not to say that I didn't include the arts, but what some things that we that we did do was, for example, um uh some of the OzO Ozobots in the elementary arts curriculum and creating different things with um robots, um after-school clubs, um and so forth, so was work in progress.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Kathy, I have one last one.
Okay.
Um uh Kathy Howland, uh oh no Kathy Key, you brought it up, is the meetings that we have every, you know, the third Wednesday. But we also do a lot of uh background work in our subcommittees. We have uh you know, the operational capital, we have a start time, we have a solar subcommittee uh policy. Do you see yourself uh on any of those, bringing your strengths from your background?
Oh, I, well, I just heard you mention the solar subcommittee. I'm actually with environmental, former environmental science teacher, so that would very much interest me and I was reading the minutes, I didn't realize I'm not familiar with where you have the solar. Is that something that you're looking into?
We're, yeah, so we're
Yeah, that would be excellent. I would love that.
Okay, thank you Karen.
Great, well, thank you Karen, we're gonna um, I think put you back into the attendees and then um we have two other people to interview for tonight, so we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Alright Karen, so I'm gonna make you an attendee again and then um you can listen in on the next set of interviews, so thank you.
Greg, just let me know when we're set.
Oh, yes, just give me one second. Alright, so now I'm going to promote um Rob Berger, the next candidate. And Karen doesn't seem, Karen doesn't want to go back to the attendee list, so you can, you can stay right where you are.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Should I move myself? I'll mute my
Rob on?
I believe Rob is trying to
Rob, are you there? I just need him to unmute. Great.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Hey Rob, this is Kathy Key, I'm the chair of the um of the school committee, how are you?
Hi Kathy, thank you for having me this evening.
Yep, so we wanna um thank you for applying for the position uh for the town of Northborough. Um and we just want to ask you to share some of your background and why you're interested to serve on the um as a Northborough resident.
Okay, well, I've been a resident of Northborough for over thirty years. Uh little gray, but still uh still a happy member of society here in Northborough. Uh I've been involved in many programs in town. Uh group program, Northborough Southborough softball, uh on the board of that program for over eight years. Great relationship between Northborough and Southborough and the athletics. I also had the honor of teaching geology to the fourth grade at Z School for probably six years until there was a slight change in the curriculum and my services were no longer needed. But I did enjoy spending a couple of hours with the fourth fourth grade classes at Z. Um other items, uh Northborough, I spent three years on the zoning board. And was happy to uh provide my services on zoning. Uh I'm a licensed site professional in Massachusetts licensed by the Commonwealth, so I have a strong background in regulatory affairs with environmental, also interpreting regulations and putting them into practice on a day-to-day basis. Uh being in the environmental field, I'm very key on upgrades and new technology as they evolve. Keeping up to date and uh putting those into place. I was, I'm also currently the uh chairperson of the Hall of Fame Committee for Algonquin, for the athletic program. We're on our uh second round, we just completed our second round of inductees last Thanksgiving. We will have our next round uh in two years when the Thanksgiving game resents to our home field advantage. Um I was boosters, athletic boosters for five years during the time that my two student athlete daughters were attending Algonquin. And uh president of boosters for two years, but involved for five. I'm still involved with boosters with the fundraising of the golf tournament, which is a great event, everybody should come out and join us. Which will happen hopefully sometime uh maybe in August if all goes well, if not, it'll end up being postponed. But right now, I think we're on schedule for hopefully having an August event. Um I also get to speak when I was with boosters at senior night, which is probably the highlight of my involvement with Algonquin. And honoring our seniors uh for booster scholarships. That was uh one of the honors that I got to do for many years and I actually miss it. It's a great time to interact with the uh students at Algonquin. And that's kind of my background. I'm also a volunteer reserve deputy with our Worcester County Sheriff's Department. Throw that in.
Thank you. Um are there any questions?
Uh this is Lauren Bailey Jones. Um I saw that um you had three years on the zoning board of appeals. Um so can you maybe speak to a challenge that um that you went through uh during your three years there and maybe how it would help you make decisions on the school committee?
One event always sticks in my mind on zoning and it's when the town of Northborough was reviewing permits for the Pierce Oil property on West Main Street. Uh it it, the project didn't go through, it was gonna be residential, uh gent residential along with retail on the first floor, two buildings on what I thought was a very compact piece of property. And um I was the only member that voted in the negative for that project to go forward. Wasn't worried about being the only one, uh had my opinion and stuck with it. And it turns out that the project never went through due to the property owner or the potential buyer getting cold feet and not thinking the project would work. And uh now we're hoping that the new fire station goes there. But it was uh, the reason I bring that one up is to show that I'm, you know, if if I feel on one side of an issue, I'm okay to stand up on my own and back it up.
Thank you so much for sharing, Rob.
Anyone else?
Kathy, I have a question.
Okay.
Um hi Robert, this is Joan Frank, Northborough member of the region. Um thank you for putting your name in as a candidate for this position. And uh thank you also for the time and efforts that you have done in volunteering in both town and especially for our high school. Um I know that, you know, when you're on the boosters and when you're also as the chairperson, you're dealing again with a lot of personalities and a lot of people, uh a lot of representatives from each of the of the sports that, you know, work together with you along with the athletic director. What would you say was a really good moment when you came away from, you know, as chairperson of the boosters, when you went wow, that was really great and if you could tell us in detail or you just, you just had a sense of accomplishment?
Sure. Um the one thing that really sticks out in my mind as one of my successes for boosters, when I first introduced the Fidrich Foundation to Unified Track. And we presented Mr. Mead, uh principal at that time. And um the program with a check for ten thousand dollars for the Unified Sports Program. Uh it was just up and coming, had been up and growing for a few years, it's thriving now, which is absolutely wonderful. But to work through the process of getting the Fidrich Foundation to approve the first grant to the um Unified Track Program was uh an absolute highlight. I I absolutely adore the Unified Track and Unified Sports athletes. They need representation and um the Fidrich Foundation now, along with Unified Sports, every year makes a donation, so I felt I kicked off that relationship, I stepped aside and it's just thriving in the Unified Sports Program, is thriving because of what we helped with and what boosters did to introduce the two parties together.
Thank you for that achievement and for the continuing uh growth that the uh your successors have had and the follow-up with it, that it wasn't just a one-time initiative. So thank you.
And I must say that after I retired from that role in boosters, the uh other presidents that took over grabbed that program and brought it much higher than I did and I gotta tip my hat to them, they really, really did a heck of a job for the last few years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Sean, I just have one question. And Greg, is this for three years or how many years is this term?
This uh, this is Lynn Wintersteed and she has one year left in her term.
One year left, okay. Um so my question is, what what's the passion that's um drawing you to uh come spend Wendy Wednesday nights uh talking about all these things?
Yeah, absolutely. Um to be honest, it's a family tradition. My dad was always heavily involved in student athletics in the town of Randolph where I grew up. I had a brother pass away, we put a scholarship into play in his name in the town of Randolph. It's just a family tradition of giving back to the community that we live in, making sure that as we pass through town, we leave our fingerprints in a good way uh on the community and for the uh members of our community, especially our uh young folks. They deserve the support of the community and I want to jump in as best I can and be an advocate for the kids.
Thank you, thank you.
I follow up on that. Um this is Paul Desmond, I'm a member from Southborough. So there's, there's a lot of ways to to give back and and you've proven that, having done it in in various capacities. But what specifically is attracting you to this school committee?
You know, being involved in Hall of Fame, being involved in boosters, I got to know a lot of the coaches who are teachers at the school, uh administrators at the school, I worked with uh Fran Witten times two during his ten years. I worked with Kara Ellis, I work currently with Mike Moserino, have a wonderful relationship with them. Uh the coaches and many of them are teachers and I want to uh support them and uh continue to grow and meet more of the staff and the administration and be a positive role model. I hope I answered your question, Paul.
You did, thank you.
Great.
Um so Rob, the other question that I asked Karen, so I mean, this is Kathy Key, by the way. Um our meetings are the third Wednesday of every month and I just want to make sure that that's, that works for you, plus sometimes we have um additional meetings and then um subcommittees that we ask people to join.
Yeah, I have no problem with that as long as I can put it in my calendar. I'm I'm good to go, I work local and uh I would be available.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Kathy, I have a follow-up to your question?
Yep.
About the subcommittees. Um Robert, I know that uh we have many different subcommittees, I'm sure one that you would probably go on to right away. Uh if appointed tonight would be the liaison to the boosters, uh which would be a great fit. But we also have like capital, uh subcommittees on cap- capital, uh operational uh liaisons to different, like the APTO, we have also policy, which is the main function, one of the main functions of the school committee is to, you know, to write and to review policies. And I was just wondering if there would, what, which subcommittees would really interest you, besides the boosters?
Uh besides boosters, I have a strong background running my own corporation for the, over the last twenty years. Um budgeting, finance, appropriation, I have a strong handle on that as a uh entrepreneur myself. I deal heavily on a daily basis with regulation and policy. If there's a fit there, I'd be happy to provide my services in that arena. But um, you know, as a newbie to the program, I think if I get selected, I'm happy to fit in where I need.
Thank you very much for your time and and consideration.
Thank you, thank everybody, thank you.
Okay, Rob, we um, thank you so much and we're just gonna, um, we have one more person to interview for tonight.
Hi Rob, it's Greg Martin, I'm gonna promote you uh to an attendee, so hang on. Okay, and I'm going to promote our last candidate. As a panelist, then I think we are all set.
Hey Carrie, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you guys see me? Hopefully.
Yes.
Hear me out, I hope.
Hi Carrie, I'm Kathy Key, I'm the chair for the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Um so welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
Um and thank you for applying as a Northborough resident for the um vacancy um for Northborough. Um can you start by just sharing your background and why you um want to serve um on the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee?
Yes, absolutely. First of all, thank you for having me here, especially in these odd Zoom-filled days. I'm sure we're all feeling that. Um, I actually grew up in Needham, Massachusetts. My husband did as well. And when we were looking for a place to buy our own home, Northborough was at the top of our list because we really enjoyed the almost semi-rural feel, but still with a, a community of growth. And one of the things with the strength of the schools, we actually bought our house the same weekend that Wegmans opened, which was very interesting. I still remember the backup down the street. And at the time, we had never heard of Wegmans, but we live about a mile from it. Um, I am a public school teacher. I have been a public school teacher for eight years now. Two of my first years were in Framingham and now I've been working for six years in the Hopkington Public Schools. Um, at, in Hopkington, I've worked in both math and science. I actually was on a mini looping team there where I taught two classes of math and two of science and looped with those same children all the way through. It's given me a really, really good background in the math and science curriculum in Massachusetts. Hopkington kept me very busy and they are still keeping me busy. I've been bounced around various places trying to fill gaps. And it's, it's given me good insight into what's available. In addition, working in two vastly different school districts made me very interested in the policy and the business slash budgetary side of being a teacher. Now that I'm in a more settled role in Hopkington, I've been seeking out ways to be a leader in that community. I am currently the co-CTL or which is curriculum teacher leader or department head of the science department there. I always seek out, you know, interview committees and things like that. I've also seeked out opportunities outside of the Hopking School Community to kind of learn more about the decision-making policies in public education. I've twice served on MCAS committees where we determined cut scores for the MCAS tests, uh, one for math and one for science. All of this has made me very interested in, you know, educational policy. Um, I'm currently, well, I should say just today, I finished living the remote teaching Zoom lifestyle. It was Hopkington's last day today. And when I saw this opening, I felt I had to apply because I would really like to get more involved in the, in, in the business side of things for education. On a personal side, I'm the mother of a young son. My son is four and right now. And now that he is old enough to, as he puts it, wipe his own butt and put on his own clothes, I have a little bit more free time. Um, he also announced that to several of my classes via Zoom while I was teaching this year. So that was very interesting. But he will be entering the, you know, Northborough Public Schools in a year. We have one more year of daycare to pay for and that has added a personal flavor to this. So I hope that answered your question.
That's great. It's such a typical boy thing to say. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Kathy, through the chair?
Yeah.
Hi, Carrie. This is Joan Frank, uh, Northborough member of the regional school committee. Wow, thank you for, hi, thank you for giving your time and effort to go into this position. Um, you had, you, you said, you know, you were bouncing around so many times and doing science and there's so many challenges. But can you um, take one of those times and, and in more detail, give us about a challenge? And maybe it was successful and maybe that come was, was very successful and unsuccessful or successful. So can you just highlight something that has happened in your career?
So, when I started being a, a public school teacher, I actually started as a maternity leave sub in Hopkington. Then I went to Framingham and what drew me back to Hopkington was they had a posting for a math slash science position. And it was for this mini team. They basically had what they called a bumper crop of kids that year. They had an extra bubble of about 50 students. So it wasn't enough for a full team. They needed someone to teach the math-science side and someone to teach the humanities side. When I accepted that, they really said, you can make this your own. That was scary to me as a relatively new teacher. It was kind of terrifying to be given that much control over what the daily schedule looked like for these students. And I was lucky to get a great partner on the humanities side and we made several schedule changes. For example, some days instead of teaching math and then science, I would just teach science for two hours straight. Now, that meant I would have to make up the math the other day, but it allowed me to do much more hands-on, in-depth labs. As for sixth graders at the time, sixth graders. And we were doing labs that I had modified down from the high school level. For example, we extracted DNA from a strawberry. And that, you know, that wiggle room that I was given really allowed me to see that I was up to a challenge like that. And really allowed the school system to see that there is room for change within their schedule. I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carrie, uh, this is Lauren Bailey Jones.
Hi.
I'm, I'm wondering what experience you have working with budgets um, in your leadership in your school district.
Great question. Um, so as co-CTL, which again is what we call the department head, we have to manage the budget for, the budget for our department. And as the science department uses a lot of consumables, we actually have the largest budget at the middle school. And it's multiple times larger than other departments. That was terrifying to me at first, but I think that we have managed well, myself and my co-leader. And it's also given me some insight into what needs to be cut, what needs to be changed and what can be maintained. In addition, before I became a public school teacher, I worked at the Princeton Review, the test preparation company for multiple years. My highest point there was I was operations manager and I managed the teachers plus the payroll at that location. In that role, uh, my region went from Maine down to part of Connecticut. So it's basically all of New England. And it meant that I had to look at how much we were spending, how much we were bringing in and where adjustments could be made.
Thank you.
So this is Kathy. Um, so I know you're busy, um, teaching and, um, and being a mom. Our meetings are the third Wednesday of every month. Um, sometimes we do have more. Um, every third, every three months, we have a combined meeting which goes a little bit longer. And then subcommittees. Do you find that? Do you think that would be a, an issue at all?
No, I think that would absolutely work. I'm lucky enough that my son likes to go to sleep fairly early, which leaves my evenings now free.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Kathy?
Yep.
I'll do the uh, same follow-up that I had done for the other two candidates. Um, besides the, as Kathy, as our chairperson, Kathy Key has mentioned our urgently scheduled meetings. Um, we also have sometimes the other ones that come up with a combined meeting that, you know, if the agenda is busy, we have to schedule an extra one. So I'm sure you'd be able to attend them. But we also have, as you know, from working in the school system, we have background work that gets done through our subcommittees. Some of them are the operational, which is the daily budget capital, which are projects that would be more than like $5,000, you know, improvements to pavement. And um, buildings and also policies, which is the driving force of the, of our school committee. And um, we also have liaisons to different committees. We have solar, we have school start time, uh, that they've been looking into. We have that initiative. You know, and a lot of, through the superintendent, a lot of uh, polling that goes out to the parents and ask them, you know, to see what their viewpoints are. What do you think would be your strengths that you would like to offer your expertise on a subcommittee?
I would say I have two strengths in there. Um, as an operations manager, previously before being a teacher, I had a large group of teachers that I had to communicate regularly with. So any kind of, you know, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, operational aspect, I have background in. Also, I have been a STEM teacher at Framingham and math and science. So anything related to those subject matters would be right down what I love to do.
Okay, thank you. And welcome to Northborough. You chose, you and your husband chose one of the two finest districts to move into between Northborough and Southborough. And your son will have a fabulous time at Proctor. So you'll become, your father will become a Proctor Papa, you know, as a.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. We love it here. We, we, every day we enjoy our decision to move here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so thank you, Carrie. Um, we're just gonna have a few minutes to um, talk about stuff and then we'll get right back to you. So stay, stay where you are.
I will.
Carrie, I'm, I'm gonna move you to the attendee. Um, and then, um, so thank you very much. It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
They will be able to meet in person.
Right, I would love to.
All right, Kathy, I think we're all set.
Okay, so um, All right, so I guess it's like the Northborough Committee to um, to talk about the three different people.
Greg, Karen is still present?
Yeah, I'm still here. You might want to move me out.
Yeah, Karen's still here.
The, the attendee list is not cooperating this evening, so. Right, I believe we're all set.
Okay, so is there um, discussion? What do you, what are your thoughts?
Kathy, I know that um, could we hear from all the member, if any member wants to um, give us uh, advice? Or give us their feelings on, on different candidates, the strengths of, you know, the candidates? From Southborough, that would be helpful.
Yeah, does anyone want to?
Who wants to kick it off? I mean, I.
Yeah, it is. No, Sean, go ahead.
I mean, I can start. I think, I think we're lucky to have three really good candidates, two stand out to me, Karen and Rob. And for different reasons, um, and I'm, I'm weighing in my head some of our challenges in the year, year ahead. That we're gonna be facing and which one might be able to add uh, and balance um, perspective of the committee. Those are the, I think Rob's, you know, got a lot of, I, I like the fact that he made a tough decision and stuck with it on the planning zone, zone of appeals. And brought that forward. He also has some business aspect. And then Karen has, you know, the high-level educational aspect and, and um, curriculum focus and, and those two. So um, those are my top two.
And I'd be, I'd be happy to Kathy give some perspective. I mean, I thought uh, Karen's interview was what I thought was the best, that she, she would bring the most to the positions, especially, you know, with, with her experience. And um, I thought, you know, clearly Rob had a, a lot of varied experience and knowledge of the, of the community. Carrie being uh, newer to the town, you know, would bring that perspective as well. Um, and clearly has some operational background. Um, out of the three, I personally thought Karen's um, was the strongest.
I'm in agreement with that Karen's was the strongest. I think that what it took to get the town common together. Um, and I thought in relatively short order for, in contrast to many of the projects in the community. I think that was impressive.
Yeah, good point. I forgot about that part.
Oh, I would say that this is a hard decision. I think that we have three outstanding candidates. And as we go forward, I just hope that the other two candidates will keep their hat in the ring uh, in involvement in schools. There's so many different avenues that they can and uh, stay involved. And this is an only one-year position. So next year, um, this position will be up for, um, on the ballot for a three-year position. So um, I was torn between probably all three, but Karen and Carrie. I like their background, but I, to me, the strongest one is Karen.
Lauren, what do you think?
I think that I would probably agree um, with Karen's background with um, with um, experience as an administrator was pretty impressive. Um, I thought that I, like Sean said, I really liked um, Rob's comments about making challenging decisions and not necessarily going with what everyone else is feeling, but sticking up for really what their decision is in their heart. Um, and I also do think that Carrie brings that sort of newer perspective, having um, a younger child and bringing that new perspective. Um, overall, I think I would probably go with Karen um, because of her administration background.
So I would like, based on all the uh, comments that were made and I appreciate the um, insight and the input from the Southborough members. It's very important because we're all, we're all one team when we all work together. Um, I would like to put in the name of, uh, support the name of, appoint Karen Ayers to the one-year position as the Northborough member of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee for the year 2020 to 2021, one-year position.
I'll second that.
Okay, so um, Joan made the motion and I just, I just like to listen to see what people have to say, but I agree with all of you. I think that Karen is a great um, interviewer. But I hope that the other two still stay around so they can give us their insight too, because I thought it was great. I thought it was three great interviews. Um, so Joan made the motion and Sean seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, so um, it's just for Northborough. So um, so Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Um, Sean?
Yes.
And Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Greg, what do we do next?
I'm going to uh, promote uh, Karen back to panelist. And then we have Andy Dowd, who is the Northborough Town Clerk, who will swear her in to her new role. And I just want to make a comment as well that it's nice when you have three candidates where you could pick any one of them and they would do an amazing job. So it's a good problem to have.
And do we, do we do anything else with um, Rob and Carrie or?
They're more than welcome to um, stay as attendees and listen uh, to the meeting.
Okay. So thank you, and Rob for um, for applying. You had great interviews and we hope that you stick around. Um, and like we said, it's a one-year position. So next year is another um, time to vote.
And I'd like to welcome Andy Dowd. So welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Greg.
And Karen, you're with us?
Yeah.
Yes. I have honor of giving you your oath via Zoom. So if you would just raise your right hand, I'll make you official. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth? So I hope you got it.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you, Andy.
You're very welcome.
Welcome, Karen.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
So now you're official member. Um, so we have more to go in our meeting.
Okay.
For your, so you can stick around for the rest of our meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, great. Well, hopefully we can, hopefully at some point soon, we can meet you in person.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Okay, so um, let's see, what is our next? Um, COVID-19 health situation.
So I have the pleasure of um, sharing with the committee that yesterday um, was the last day of uh, school for our students. And I just want to commend all the teachers at Algonquin, faculty and staff and the leadership team for the great work they did during um, the COVID health situation. Um, as you know, we've been out of school since March um, 13th. And um, I can honestly say that the work that Algonquin has done to support students is, is very impressive. So I just want to thank faculty and staff. And although yesterday was the last day of school for our students, we're really now looking forward to the fall and really thinking about what fall reopening will look like. We have three scenarios that we're planning for. One is a full reopening. Uh, the second is a hybrid approach and we are waiting for some guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education around what that guidance will be. Most likely will be fairly descriptive with the department um, basically sharing with all 351 districts, um, what that will look like. We're hoping to receive guidance by the end of this week. Um, and greater detail supposedly will be released on the second week in July. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern. We do have a reopening advisory panel that has done a lot of great work up to this point. Uh, but again, we're just waiting for more information. So at this point, I um, would be happy to answer any questions. Um, and if there are no questions, I turn it over to Keith Lavoy. You can speak to some of the operations work and planning that is taking place.
Anybody have any questions? All right.
And Keith?
Excellent. So yes, I do have a couple items I'd like to update the committee on this evening. Like Greg said, we did close things out yesterday for NS Borough Connect 2.0. The buildings have been busier with students and where families coming back to the buildings to collect belongings and and teachers doing everything they can to prepare their classrooms for summer cleaning. We are almost there. We just have a few more teachers that need to wrap things up. And I believe the administrative staff has almost concluded all the student belonging pickups as well. So we are wrapping that up. And and Mike Gorman is now getting into full swing with all the summer preparations that need to take place. At the top of the list is certainly paying close attention to the guidance we get from the state and making sure that Algonquin is ready for whatever school will be in the fall. Right now, we are looking closely at Plexiglas, believe it or not, and how that can be implemented in the reception areas of the school. And there are many at Algonquin. So we're looking at a lot of different creative solutions, and Mike is working with different vendors to provide those solutions for us. And we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get that guidance, but that's certainly something that he's working on with a lot of detail. The other thing that he's been exploring is certainly the sizes of classrooms and how we can space students safely in different rooms at what different orientations. So that has been definitely part of of his work in the building prep part of things for the summer. The other thing I wanted to update you on is the town meeting situation. I know Mr. Dowd is, was on the meeting earlier, but want to mention that Southborough did have a successful town meeting on Saturday. A lot went into the planning of that. Mr. Hegarty, the Town Clerk of Southborough, was very creative, did a lot of different things to make it happen for the community. And overall, I heard a lot of people mention that they like being outside. It was gorgeous weather. It was seventy degrees. I guess it did get a little crispy there towards the end, but they were able to conduct a successful town meeting. Corresponding to that, Northborough is planning to do something similar. I did receive official word that the town meeting is scheduled for July eleventh at nine AM, and it will be held on the stadium football field. We are making a few adjustments to the space to make sure that it is safe for all attendees, and that's something that we will continue to work on. Mike Gorman has been intimately involved in that, working very closely with Scott Sharpeteer to assist with all the preparation of the space. So those are the two major things. The other thing that kind of wrapped up that it's amazing that it did occur, but we wrapped up our food services delivery program. Monday was the last day of delivery. I do want to thank Diane Cofer for all her work through the Algonquin Kitchen and her staff. They did an amazing job of preparing the meals for delivery. And Mary Ellen Duggan and the team of nurses executed flawlessly right to the end, and we were able to support many families in town. But that, that program has concluded as of Monday. So those are the three major pockets that are happening right now and certainly COVID-related. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Well, I have one. So they're not meeting until the middle of July? So does that mean that the town of Northborough, including, I guess, the Northbrook K-8s, are operating with a July budget that's one-twelfth of the prior year's budget?
That is accurate. So the the finance team has put together one-twelfth budgets for the region and the Northborough. We also, just as a precaution, put a one-twelfth budget board for Southborough. So the next major milestone for the regional budget is July eleventh, as Keith indicated.
So is there any issue for the region, the, you know, in terms of how?
You know, we've looked at it closely, and Becky's done a lot of analysis because most of, you know, the payroll and so forth. So we are, we are in good shape, and we're hoping that July eleventh date, town meeting date, is successful.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joan.
Okay, Kathy, I have a question through you to Keith.
Okay, good.
Okay. Hey, Keith, I watched the remotely, the Northborough Selectmen's Meeting on Monday, and several questions came up from people who called in. One was saying about, and this might be too early. One was that, you know, asking about restrooms and would they be able to use the high school facilities? And the remark was made that the high school facilities will be off limits. And so they were asking, and I know it might be too soon, if there's going to be you know, porta-potties that are going to be set up, and how are they going to take care of it if it's the, you know, if it's the heat? So I'm just asking a question because people that, you know, watch the Selectmen's Meeting also watch our meeting.
So Joan, I can answer that actually. So we've been working very closely with John Cudair and his team. And originally, as you you might have known, the town meeting was supposed to be inside the gymnasium. And obviously, the success of the Southborough Town Meeting, but we're allowing the use of our facilities, and they will be using the outdoor facilities on athletic field as part of the town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good.
So if there are no other questions for Keith, I'll turn it over to Rebecca Pellegrino. Just want to compliment Becky and her team. They've been living budgets since early October. And I think they can see the end, are close to the end, and they've done an outstanding job. And Becky will have an update on the finance department and the work that it is doing.
Thank you, Greg. So as we were just discussing, we will be operating under a one-twelfth budget. There have been many calls held by Desi with the statewide business managers group because we are not the only regional school district who is in this situation. And they actually had us submit documentation to Desi on June first in anticipation of towns not being able to hold town meetings. They did instruct districts who had town meetings scheduled in June to submit this documentation as a precaution. And I did inform them that we are now anticipating operating under the one-twelfth budget. So we will wait to hear back from the commissioner, as he will be the one that will ultimately set what that one-twelfth budget will look like. But Chris Tagg, our treasurer, and Caroline Willard has put together a spreadsheet so that we could anticipate what our costs will be in July. And as Greg said, we do feel confident that we will be able to absorb the costs that are that we will be receiving in July without any issue. Also, on another note, on COVID nineteen, so as a result of the closure, we did see some reductions in our heating and our electricity as we had anticipated. So those were two positive results. Right now, our heating is tracking at a savings of about twenty-five thousand, and our electricity is tracking at a savings of twenty-eight thousand. Additionally, I've been working with Mary Ellen and Keith, and I'm sure Mary Ellen will fill you in more to order PPEs for our year-round staff and also in preparation for the next school year. We are actually participating in a statewide purchasing effort and submitting some documentation to the state so that they will have anticipated numbers from school districts on all of the high-mead items that will be required to open schools. I just wanted to also send out a big thank you to Nancy Bissett, who helped to coordinate these orders with us. We are also working with district and building-level administrators to plan purchases for supplies and materials that may be needed on the first day of school, whatever that first day of school looks like. And then finally, Caroline Willard has been working closely with Keith Lavoy and Diane Cofer to process food service balances for any twelfth graders and also to collect any outstanding balances for our food services. So that is what has been happening in our world as a result of the closure.
Does anybody have any questions for? Thank you.
All right, we have Mary Ellen Duggan, our wellness coordinator. We'll share a little bit about the work that her and her team have been working on.
Hi, everybody. Um the nurses were busy all through the closure, delivering lunches, checking on their high-risk kids. And we're getting ready to hire two new nurses at the high school, both of them retired. So we're in the process of that. We have some very strong candidates, which is nice. The PPE, which Becky mentioned, we're in the process of ordering it to get ready for next year. And maybe even the summer program, what we might need for that, if that comes to fruition in person. So that's really what we're doing now, is planning and waiting for the guidelines so that we can have safety measures in place. We've, we have outlines of safety that we've gone through with the committee, but until we get the guidelines, they really won't be written in stone anywhere until we get those from Desi. Any questions?
Kathy, I have a question.
Yep, good.
So Mary Ellen, students who were receiving meals during the closure, what kinds of resources do they have during the summer?
So um for the summer, there are summer lunch programs through the federal lunch program. And the closest one to us is at Richer School in Marlboro, one of Worcester. And anybody can go to those for lunches. You can just kind of like our, anybody could get, anybody could have lunches there. But um Northborough Community Meals are, will be starting up soon, and Nutrition 68 is going to continue through the summer.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
You're welcome.
This is Sean. I just, Keith had talked about the facilities planning, but in the nurse's office, are they? Do you anticipate any, there's supposed to be like an isolation room and things like that. Are you anticipating any physical overhauls of the nursing area?
So um we are anticipating, the nurses have been planning to, because we need to have a healthy section, really, and a sick section. So that's what the nurses have been talking about. I know some, the high school nurses really had it almost like a triage area, a sick area, a healthy area. So they had it planned out as to what they would think was best. As for isolation, that's the biggest discussion. Do we need a separate room or would a curtain around suffice? There's different, you know, opinions on that, because it is droplet. It's not in the air, so it can't, you know, get on an air current and go anywhere. It's just gonna, if you cough or any kind of droplet, it's just gonna fall to the surface. So um we're waiting to get guidance on that too.
Okay. I was just trying to get a sense of whether, you know, construction or something is going to need to be done.
We're gonna add a wing out into the new, the parking lot out front of Tunda.
The COVID wing?
Yeah.
Get some isolation tents and put them outside.
Honestly, though, thinking of creative solutions is part of the work that we are planning for now. So if there is something that can be done to make things, or give our nurses more options at these critical moments, we're gonna, we're gonna put those in place. So it's been an ongoing conversation. None of this is, none of this is simple. But the last thing we want to do is be taking down walls or putting walls up. So if we get creative in other ways, then that's going to be the primary avenue to take.
One, one nurse's office did move to a different place across the hall because they didn't have great ventilation.
In another building, right?
What?
Algonquin or another building?
At another building.
At another building, right.
So, yeah. So they're all in the plans, anything that might be needed to be done.
So Mary Ellen, this is Kathy, and I know this is going to kind of be like a crazy question for you, but it kind of has to do with more the fall. Do you guys have any plans to um think about mosquitoes? And the high school before, you know, before September? Just have like a plan in place?
So I was on my first Triple E webinar last week, Department of Health.
I, I know, I know it sounds crazy, but I have to add.
It sounds crazy. We're gonna have a double header in the fall and a triple header once flu season comes. So um they did talk a lot about spraying, about they, they watched the, you know, checking the mosquitoes, testing the mosquitoes. They're always doing that. The peak is in the summer, really, you know, like July, August is when it's showing the peak in the mosquitoes. So um we will be planning on that, yes.
Okay.
That will be in our plans, our health and wellness plans.
I know it doesn't, I know you don't want a part of the conversation, but.
And part of the planning, though.
It has to, exactly. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Heather Richards and the HR Department.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So the Human Resources Department and the team has really been supporting a lot of employees on an individual basis. And oftentimes, I say that it's invisible because it is on a one-on-one basis that we're providing support. And we've seen an uptick in the number of people asking about benefits when their spouses may have lost their, their jobs. And so we've been answering a lot of questions around that and supporting employees with that. And then people have had a lot of questions about absences and accommodations, and we've been having conversations with employees about possible accommodations as needed. And those are on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the, the person's condition may be. In addition to that, there have been a number of unemployment claims. And some of those claims are fraudulent claims. I don't know if you've, you've heard, but the state has seen an uptick in fraudulent unemployment claims. So even our, some of our active employees who are still working, there have been claims put in on their behalf. And so the HR department has really been supporting employees around that and providing coaching and guidance on what to do if they, if they are a victim of fraud. So we've, we've been trying to provide supports around employee wellness and providing different courses or trainings as available. But one of the big areas where we're focusing on right now is recruitment of substitutes. So we have active postings for substitutes for the fall. And so if anybody's interested, they can certainly go out and apply to be in our subpool. And I certainly have some outreach and recruitment efforts happening to try to make sure that we increase our subpool with nurses, custodians, and educators for the fall.
Okay, I have a question if I could.
Yep.
And Heather, I'm not sure if this is for you or for Becky, but there's been a couple of articles I read in the paper recently that talked about kind of mass notifications to non-tenured teachers because of some legal date that needs to be given to them if they're not going to be renewed in the upcoming year. And these towns have kind of taken a, I guess, a worst-case position of not knowing if there'd be reductions in staff. And so just kind of globally gave notice to anyone who fell in the non-tenured position so that they would comply with some law, I guess. And so my question would be if, if something horrible happens and the state doesn't give us a nickel, you know, for, for whatever reason, and we feel a need to reduce the workforce, will we be legally allowed to take that kind of action? Or since we missed that deadline, are we a little bit stymied?
If, that's no issue at all. So that's Mass General Law 71, I believe it's forty-one or forty-two. And that says if you are going to non-renew, non-PTS educators, then you need to notify them by, by June fifteenth. And budgetary reductions are very different than non-renewals. So if there are budgetary reductions that come down the pike, then we certainly still have flexibility to do, to be responsive and do what we need.
So why these towns? I mean, it, it really reads like they think it's because of budget squeezes that are going to come at them that, and I think yesterday Franklin told a hundred and five teachers that, you know, they were, they were maybe on this bubble. And it certainly read. And it certainly read in, at least in the article in the Boston Globe today, that it had to do with money.
I, I can share with you that some districts don't have HR professionals in their district. And they may not have HR directors who happen to be attorneys as well. And so we, we are in very solid legal ground if we do need to be responsive in the future.
Well, thank you for that. Becky, aren't you glad this didn't go your way? I waited for Heather.
I, I waited for the attorney.
Can I just make a, a general comment, too? I think that it's very difficult to compare town to town because of fiscal management. And I think we're very fortunate to obviously live, to be part of a district where both communities are well-managed. And we're not seeing some of the financial challenges that other communities are seeing. That has a factor to it as well. We're, we're in a pretty good fiscal position. And we're confident that the budget that we're bringing forth is one that takes into account all the variables that could happen moving forward with the state.
Well, yeah, and I thought we had it well, Greg, and I, I do agree with your point of view about the two towns. I mean, they're extraordinarily supportive from what I've heard and been involved in. You know, their, their, their tax receipt, although maybe they're not at 100% predicted levels, they're not horrible either. And they feel, people who are responsible for tax on it, feel like they're in reasonable good shape to, to go forward with the budgets. I just, that whole legal date about, you know, having to make decisions about non-tenured staff is just a, a bit of a surprise to me. And I've read about it over and over and over again the last couple of weeks or so. And I just, we never had to cross that bridge, to my knowledge. Appreciate the clarity.
All right. Thank you, Heather. And next we have Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services.
Good evening, everybody. We are in Student Support Services. We're very busy right now preparing for summer services, better known as extended school year. And although additional guidance is coming from the Department of Ed, there was a June 8 memo from Russell Johnston, our State Director of Special Education. And in that memo, he specified that special education services will look different this summer since we're still working on as the top priority, the health and safety of students, parents, guardians, and school personnel. It also said that schools will not be able to provide summer services in the same manner they typically do, just as we couldn't during our March through June building closure. However, all students will have access to those services described in their IEPs. And whether it's remote for most students or it's in-person on a limited basis for high-priority students, again, we are awaiting guidance on what that means. We have a Zoom meeting tomorrow with the Department of Ed, and we're hoping to get additional information. We are currently preparing for both remote and in-person. We're actively hiring staff and we hope to have all the hires in place. Contracts have already started to go out. People are accepting those contracts. We expect to have people in place by the end of next week and early the following week. We will be doing training for all of the staff in summer to prepare for both the remote entry and then the possible in-person for those high-intensity or high-needs students. So that is really where our focus is right now in Student Support Services. And we are waiting for guidance additionally like everybody else. Are there any questions?
Marie, I have a question. My usual Marie question. Marie, I'm wondering if, if guidance comes out allowing some in-person E S Y. Will families get to choose whether they're in-person or remote, or will that come from Student Support Services?
We will, we will give guidance on who we're targeting for the in-person because it has to be our high-priority students as defined by the state. But parents can opt out of that and say they would prefer to continue with remote. So they will have the option of doing both, but all parents won't have the option of in-person because we have to think about the safety of our, our students. So, and, you know, the, the capacity, the building capacity and all of the things involved in that, the PPE, all of the things that everybody's talked about tonight.
Thank you, Marie.
This, this is Sean. I guess I would just say two things. And so it's my understanding, too, one of the challenges with the summer is we won't be able to transport students to school.
That's not true. We did, the, the good news is we did just get information from our ABC Collaborative through VanPul, and that's how we transport students in the summer. And they said they are ready and able to do that. The state is cautioning us against doing all of that and trying to offer that and, and encourage parents to, if we do in-person, to encourage parents to drop their kids off. But if they can't, those transportation services would be available. And we are counting on using that transportation for our in-person.
Well, that's fantastic. That's great. That's great news. Yeah. And the other thing I would just say is like, I know all the work, it's almost double planning. And I mean, you're only, you know, days away from starting to open. So I appreciate all your hard work and feel your pain. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Marie, this is Kathleen Howland. I've been taking the meetings for NSPAC, as you know. And you have been fielding some very difficult questions. You have offered Grace, information, patience. I, I concur with Sean. It's a difficult position to be in. And, and you're working triple time by the, by my view of just a little piece of your life. So I just really want to lodge you for the heavy lifting that you've been doing with Grace.
Thank you. And I, and I appreciate your support at those NSPAC meetings. I think we have a great team and I think our parents are extremely collaborative. And I, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's doing and all the questions that they're putting forward so that we can work together and figure this out.
I agree. Those meetings are a good reason to leave the garden.
Thank you, Marie.
All right. Lastly, we have Julie Doyle to give an update on technology.
Hi, everybody. So as most of us did, the end of the year was, was a combination of wrapping up this year and at the same time trying to plan for next year. But Tech Department provided plenty of tech support and training for teachers. And I just have to say how proud I was to be part of the tech team. They went above and beyond the call of duty, helping families and teachers and loaning out devices. And it, they did a fantastic job. We, in May, finally made a purchase of a Zoom license for the district. We were using the free licenses that were provided by Zoom for educators, but we felt the need to maximize security. And so we did make the, the purchase of Zoom accounts for teachers and school administrators. And what's, what's nice is at the high school level and at the middle school that the new paid licenses integrate very well with Canvas. So that has been put into place because more than likely they'll be using this a lot next year as well. We are in the process still of making the transition to Power School, going live probably the first week of July. But as I've mentioned at previous meetings, we have paid for an extension for our legacy system, iPass. And we will have that right now for 90 days. And I think that that's probably all that we'll need. We then will have access to all the data and we will self, self-host the data. And they're helping us with, with that transition. But the Power School transition has been going very well. We've been conducting trainings. We've been doing data migration. And Andy Mariotti, the Technology Manager, has been owning that and working very hard. And according to the Power School Implementation Team, we are, we are right on target. We also feel very confident that this is the right platform to be with as we move forward into sort of uncertainty that, you know, it might be that we have to totally adjust our schedule come July 15. And we feel as though the support of Power School will help us through this much better than iPass ever could. We also are working towards what we can do to help students and families find success with the likelihood of the remote learning that will happen again next year. And based on survey feedback, we've begun to look at more consistent ways to deliver assignments and, you know, talk about Zoom meetings and, and provide other important information to students and families through Canvas. So we have a group of teachers who are looking at that, and we will continue that work over the summer. And the last thing that I wanted to tell you is that we're firming up plans for our district to be one-to-one. And for those of you who don't know what that means, probably most of you do, is that we will be providing a device for all of our students, K to eight. We felt as if the, the shared card model that we've been using for years would not make sense in, in, in this current situation. So based on our inventory and, and the budget money that we do still have available to make purchases, we feel confident that we'll be able to, to make this work. High school will remain sort of a combination of BYOD. So students will be given the opportunity or the choice to either use their own device or we could issue them a Chromebook as well.
So Julie, will, um, the kids from K to eight, can they take their devices home with them then? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, if I could?
Yep.
So Julie, a couple of things. One, kudos on the one-to-one initiative. I think it's, I think it's a little bit overdue. I'm glad we're doing it. I think it's, I think it'll be a boon to, to the district certainly. And, and then just on the, on the iPass replacement project, just, I don't know, just a caution from a guy who's been burned by software salesmen many more times than I can account. You know, every project is always on target until it's not. And, and then it's, then it's a surprise to them and they're shocked beyond belief. But, you know, it, it won't be the first time it happened. Be a little pessimistic and, and, you know, kind of on the lookout as you, as you deal with, with those kind of folks. Because their job is to tell you that everything's gonna be perfect. And like I said, they will tell it to you right up until the day it's not.
You know, Paul, I appreciate that. And, you know, we have run into a couple of, we didn't think they were as on target as we were. But what I feel as if is something that will benefit us. We have a former employee who worked in our technology department who last year went through this transition in his new position. And so we have him sort of as an ally and sharing all the processes with us. So, but you're right, I, I feel as though we should still be guarded. And we're, we're optimistic but realistic at the same time.
No, and I'm glad you did the 90-day extension on the iPass. I think that's a, it's a good cushion to have. And my guess is if you need to extend it a little bit more, iPass will gladly take your money.
Absolutely. You're, you're right about that.
Thanks. Nicely done.
Kathy, this is Sean.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask about the one-to-one initiative. So it's, it's K to eight. And then do the eighth graders roll up with their device? Or what is the, the plan after eighth grade?
Yep, that's a good question, Sean. We, we probably, probably will, as kids transition from school to school, they'll actually get the device that belongs, you know, at their school. Especially because we're, at, at the high school, we're two towns and three school districts and the funding and all that. So we, we're still working out those details. We're, right now, we're using basically all the devices that we've purchased to be shared cards, and we're handing those out. So we have to really do a lot more research on the replacement cycle and what that will look like in future years. We, we know we can make it work, but we're just not exactly sure of the details yet.
And so, so I guess the, the, the details are still being worked out, too, whether or not to go one-to-one or leave some choice at the high school.
I think currently, yeah, you're right. I guess we're still working out those details. But I think the BYOD combination of, and leaving choices is still something that we're probably gonna be continuing.
And I understand there's, you know, fiscal reasons and things like that. I guess I would like to encourage more conversation, not tonight, but at another time to think about. And I'd like to see options and financial options and things like that. I think if, you know, we provide students textbooks and we don't expect them to pay for it, I, I would, this is a tool that they need to learn. It's not just an option anymore. I'd like us to consider, you know, buying those and providing those for students. You know, and maybe it's a rollout plan, starting with the ninth grade or those eighth graders coming up and moving year to year. But I, I, I think it can leave in equities and some, some quiet hardships that families might not want to express if, if it's not. I know we have like 500 available, but, you know, we have 1,300 students. So, and, and that's quite a cost. But I, I think I'd like to explore that and, and to learn more about if that's a possibility going forward.
No, I think that, I think you make a very valid point, especially now that we're actually moving one-to-one K to eight. So we, we will continue to do that and, and with, with your help as well. So.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your updates. That was great.
I just make a general comment that this team, which also includes RotaWeb, Stephanie Ryan-Moore, Jennifer Suker, Erica Mathi, and Deva Mew, has been outstanding. Well, they're typically outstanding, but during this pandemic and the closure, they have done tremendous work. They've been extremely collaborative. The work that each department does intersects with other departments. And for the most part, they laugh at most of my jokes, not all of them, but most of them. And I think, I think those are real smiles when we come together and meet and talk about really challenging topics. So I just want to commend this team for the work and their student-centered approach and still maintaining some sense of humor.
It's been a crazy, it's a crazy, you know, few months. And, and I'm sure everyone's exhausted with it. But I hope you guys all know how much it's appreciated from all of us. So thank you. Um, all right. So our next is legislative update.
So just a quick update, the area that we're focused on primarily is really monitoring the state budget and watching that progress or not progress. Really, our areas that we're focusing on are Chapter 70, state aid, regional transportation reimbursement, and circuit breaker. And we're also closely monitoring the Student Opportunity Act. So there are opportunities to advocate on behalf of the district. And there are a few, there's actually a letter that I will submit to Kathy to be able to submit to our local legislators to advocate, to maintain funding for Chapter 70, Regional Transportation Reimbursement and Circuit Breaker, the funds that we rely on with our budget.
So next is a ratification of agreement with the Algonquin Custodians.
Sure. So we had contract negotiations with Algonquin Custodians. We met on several occasions and we've come to initial agreement. Now Heather Richard, speak to the details of that agreement.
Thank you. So, so it is a one-year agreement that, that we have with the custodians. And I, I believe that there's fair compensation. And, and in addition to that, there are some small language changes, such as getting sick time upfront on July 1 instead of having that accrue on a monthly basis. And there are a few people who receive a travel reimbursement for travel throughout the district. And, and that has had some slight increase, like a $50 increase to the travel reimbursement. And then if, if somebody is scheduled to work on an, on a weekend event and there's less than 24 hours' notice, then they would receive compensation, $100 in compensation for that last-minute notice. And then there is an in- And then there is an increase in the clothing allowance. And that's in essence, the terms of of what we had agreed to. Subject to the school committee vote and ratification.
Madam Chair, I would vote, I would move that we vote to approve.
We have to, Dan, I think you have to read that in. Can you see it?
I can see it, I would, my, I I would motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement. CBA between the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee and the Algonquin Regional High School Custodians. From fiscal year twenty twenty one to fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Okay, so the motion by Dan Kalenda, second by Paul Bucka. Alright, so Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes, Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Lauren Bailey.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
And, right, do we have Karen vote on this too?
She could vote or she could abstain.
Karen.
I think for to, I think for tonight I'll abstain.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so our next is a super intense report to the committee.
This evening we have Andy McAllen and Kathy Carmignani, who will give a brief principals report focusing primarily on graduation events.
Good evening, so yeah, June seventh, we had a outdoor. Awarding of the diploma for our seniors and it was a tremendous event, a beautiful day. Special thank you to Kathy Key and Kathleen Plesko, who joined us for a good portion of the day. Being outside with our seniors, it was really a unique opportunity in the sense that they got to walk through their class of twenty twenty sign that was specially created just for them. Last year for their junior prom. Then walked down Algonquin's version of the red carpet, which was actually a little gray, but red enough. And go on to the stage where they picked up their diploma and got their picture taken all in the midst of honking, beeping and. Loud shouts and cheers by their family as they as they drove along with them as they walked the route and picked up their diploma, so it was a great day. Lot of positive feedback from our families in the community and from our seniors. Want to give a special shout out to to our senior steering committee, those students have done an amazing job. On a challenging year, in a challenging year that certainly was something no one expected, they were still able to. Do the best with what they had and make make events happen for their senior class and and they they deserve a lot of credit for. All the good things that had done, so. The next events are June thirtieth, there'll be a video graduation that Northborough Cable Access will be sending out. That again will be June thirtieth and then July thirtieth will be a live graduation ceremony. That will be taking place on the football field and more information to come as that day approaches, so a great event though on June seventh.
So I I just make a a comment to the chair, I just want to thank the AHS leadership team, Dr. Walsh. Mr. McGowan, Mrs. Carmignani, Mr. McDonald. Mrs. Capalvo, Angela Mall, Emily Philbin, the steering committee, they, I don't think they ever want to plan graduation again in a pandemic, I think that's a once in a career, but. I can't emphasize enough the great job they did, but also the challenge that it was just trying to sort information out. To identify what we could do safely and they did it very well, so I just want to compliment them and thank them for their hard work.
So I'm, so I'm going to cry if I start to speak about it, so. It was really well done, it was very organized and I have a video of all getting her diploma, so for those who haven't seen it, I would share it with you if you want, it was just. It was nice, it was, it was, you don't know what to expect when you get there, but then when you go through the process, it was. It was good and the fact that they could do it with. Upset that they're friends, I think really helped as well, just so they could watch them walk across the stage as well. So thank you for all the organization and I know it was a long day for everyone and. As a parent, it was, I really appreciate it.
I'd like to echo Kathy's comments, I've heard some comments from the community members just about how special the diploma event was. And how well it was planned and how every graduate really did feel special. I've actually heard some people say that they hope that this tradition continues. So it that, it was really well done, I wasn't able to make the event, but I was able to watch it via live stream, which I didn't even know was happening, so. Thank you also for making it accessible to those who couldn't be there in person.
Thank you, and yeah, I thank you to Northborough Cable Access too, who was there the entire time and before and after with with everything, they've been a tremendous support through. The whole process with everything senior related.
Alright, thank you, Andy, so next in your packet are the enrollments. So we are, there are no significant variances from the last report. And in terms of looking ahead to the fall, currently we're at. One thousand four hundred and ten students is our projections, but that does. Assume that a hundred percent of current eighth grade students in Southborough and Northborough attend Algonquin. Just on a side note, Keith Lloy has had conversations with Gary Herschek at Trotter around. The number of students who will be attending private school in the fall from Trotter. And it looks like the number is decreasing, as you know, this year we had twenty percent of our Trotter students attend. School, high school elsewhere and this year we're looking at ten percent of students at Trotter attending private school, so. That number is shifting to more students from Trotter attending Algonquin.
I have an enrollment question, probably it's not a. It's more a trend question or have people reached out to you, there's quite a few families that are asking about homeschooling options in the fall or or is Northborough Southborough feeling those type of questions?
So we are, we are getting a few of those types of questions and. Part of our work for reopening the fall will be surveying families around what their plans are. As they look to the reopening of school and one of the questions will be, do you plan to homeschool your child in fall?
Yeah, I mean, I know some of the national numbers they're talking is, you know, twenty to forty percent of families keeping their kids home, but. I think we still have a long way to go to find out what the state's going to tell us before people make those decisions.
Next in your packet is the review of the capital plan and I believe. There are no changes since the last time the plan was presented to the committee and just give me one second, I will. Open up the plan. And I'm not sure if there are any specific questions about the capital plan at this point in time.
So Greg, through Kathy.
Yep, go ahead.
So when I look at this screen, we only have two capital projects, correct?
Correct, well, we have, so in FY twenty one, so we had the redundant domestic hot water. Boiler, the phone system upgrade, the ground tractor, the project adventure course, all of those are on hold. And then we had in FY twenty one column also. Capital improvements for the athletic field. The track resurfaced, stadium lighting, tennis courts and cross country, those are on hold as well. And then if you look down below, we have track resurfaced five thousand dollar, it's a annual maintenance. Again, tennis courts, annual maintenance. Some door hardware replacement and gym wall. More modern fold refinish and repair. And lastly, the theater, actually the eyewash infrastructure improvement in the science labs.
And Greg, just suggests as you saw at the Southborough Town Meeting, you know, to be prepared to discuss the the. The rationale for each and every one of these, why they are in the years that they are, anything that is in this current, you know, coming fiscal year, why it needs to be done now. Is going to have to be explained and it should be explained, you're going to have very pointed questions, I will suggest from residents as to why. X hundreds of thousands of dollars need to be, you know, spent now instead of, you know, two, three, five years from now.
Absolutely. So that is the review of the capital plan and as Mr. Kalenda indicated, we'll be prepared at town meeting to. Give some details around some of the projects that are proposed. Next in your package is the FY twenty monthly general fund expenditure report and I will have Becky Pellegrino speak to that report.
So as you can see on the monthly general fund report, as of May thirty first, twenty twenty, the district had six hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and forty five dollars or two point six one remaining on the bottom line. The finance team has been busy, we continue to clean up our, any outstanding invoices and close purchase orders that are no longer needed. Our plan for the remaining year end funds is to allocate funds up to the five percent allowed in the E and D account. To move money into the regional transportation funds account and then also departments are purchasing textbook supplies and materials that help to restore reduced FY twenty one budget line items. And we will also be prepaying for FY twenty one collaborative and private school tuitions as permitted under mass general law to again. Also provide some relief in the FY twenty one budget.
Madam Chair, I would move that we vote to approve until audited.
And just a comment on, again, on the wonderful job Becky's done on this whole thing, we've put her through hoops and she's come out terrifically well, so thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Paul.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Alright, Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes, Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Paul Desmond. Joan Frank.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Lauren Bailey.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Karen Ayers. Thank you, Becky, by the way.
Thank you.
So next in your packet is the FY twenty statement of revenue and Becky will also talk about transferring. About to transfer regional transportation receipts.
So as of the end of May twenty twenty, the district had received the majority of the revenues that we had anticipated for FY twenty. Of note is the state regional transportation reimbursement amount. During FY twenty, we received additional unanticipated funds in the amount of seventy two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. And so tonight we are asking for the school committee, for the school committee's approval to transfer those funds into the Northborough Southborough Regional School District Transportation Fund.
Kathy, if I could, I would move that we vote to transfer regional transportation receipts in the amount of seventy two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars to the Northborough Southborough Regional School District's Transportation Fund.
So the motion is made by Paul Bucka.
Second.
Okay, second by Joan, is there any, anyone want to say anything?
This is a terrific idea. We should support it.
Okay, are we ready, Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes, Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Joan Frank.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Lauren Bailey.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Karen, Karen Ayers.
Yes, I'll always vote for more money.
Kathy, if I could, I I think we need to vote on accepting the the statement, the FY twenty statement of revenue until audited as well.
I will second.
Alright, so wait, yep, okay, alright, so that's Paul Bucka motioned, Dan Kalenda second, alright, Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes, Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Paul Desmond. Joan Frank.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Lauren Bailey.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Karen Ayers. Okay, Greg.
So we have our treasurer's report, so this evening with us is Christine Tagg, who continues to do an outstanding job. So she will give her treasurer's report and then. The school committee will make its annual reappoint, reapportment of Christine Tagg as the district treasurer, so welcome, Christine.
Hello all, I hope you can all hear me. I had a bit of an issue with my wifi, because I'm on my forty foot boat in North Kingston, Rhode Island. Self quarantine, but anyway, I would like to announce. That the rating agency has affirmed our rating at a double A plus. I was somewhat concerned about that rating review when they first contacted me, I've been in this business for over thirty years. And have never been through a rating review review like this after three years of issuing this debt. They were looking because of COVID nineteen at the town, the town's ability to pay as well as the region. They were starting to almost segregate the towns from the region as far as the rating review. I was ready to do battle and I have to say, I commend Greg. And his financial staff, which have only been in place for one year. It was the first time, I have been told by a rating. Agency, his name was Christian Richard, Richard, that he could not believe the knowledge we had. On the financial statements, most communities don't even look at their financial statements or their audit. He was very, very impressed with that and I have to tell you, I was impressed with the team. Greg did a great job, Becky, myself, because on my watch, in thirty years, I've never seen a downgrade. And it wasn't going to happen, so we held, we held the status quo. Given these economic times, they highlighted the fact that, you know, obviously we have two towns that are. Above normal and high grade quality, but at the same time, they're looking for. The regional school districts to start to hold their own, so I will encourage the school committee. To continue to commit money to the E and D reserves. As well as other reserves, because that seemed to be the forte with the rating agencies. They want to see us sustain ourselves on our own, even though Prop two and a half pays our debt. They still want to see the obligation for the region to pay its own. So again, I would like to see the district continuing to sustain their reserves. In whatever reserves, whether it be to a stabilization fund or the out of district stabilization funds, I think that would. Be very important go forward, while we do not have significant capital projects in the future. The future is still there, so anyway, enough said from me.
Kathy, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Christina, you know, certainly you've you've given us great advice in the last couple of years on this whole thing and it's it's good to hear the rating agencies. Are are responding as as positively as they have and you've saved us money, you've you've given us guidance in ways that have helped the taxpayers. in ways that have helped the taxpayers of this district in major ways. And so based on that, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Christine Tagg as the Northborough Southborough Regional School District's Treasurer from July one, two thousand and twenty to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Can we also vote the treasurer report in at the same time?
Sure. I didn't know. Yeah, do we need to do that?
No, so, so I, we're just avoiding, voting her reappointment.
Oh, perfect. Okay, sorry. Yes, Christine, thank you. I ditto to all of Paul's comments. Okay, so to reappoint, it was Paul Bucka, and then was it Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we only have a couple more votes. Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Joan Frank?
Definitely, yes. And thank you, Christine.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Great.
Can I say one more thing? Again, I want to thank the financial team. They are new, but they are awesome. Becky and Caroline Willett and Michelle Lemay have done an outstanding job. Our cash is reconciled on a timely basis. I'm in awe. I'm very happy with them.
Well, thank you. And enjoy your time on your boat.
I will.
Kathy, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Paul, you can.
So Christine, you mentioned continuing to invest in E and D and things like a stabilization fund. I seem to remember we tried to do that in Southborough anyway, a couple of years ago, and town meeting didn't go for it. So from what I'm hearing, we don't currently have a stabilization fund. Is that right?
No, we don't. And you're right, Paul. What happened was one town agreed, the other one did not. And as a result, it didn't happen. But I think we need to start pushing that because I got to be honest with you, the rating agencies are starting to look towards the regions. Not so much our region, because we're only a two-school district region, but multiple regions. But anyway, I was really getting concerned because they said, what are you doing outside your E and D to get more stability for the, for the district? Because otherwise, we have to rely on the two towns for supplemental appropriations. And that's what they don't want us to have to do. So whatever we can do, you know, to get the towns to agree to a separate stabilization fund would be great.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to put that on the radar for, I don't know if we can still do it for the fall town meeting in Southborough, but if not, then I won't after that. But thank you, Christine.
Maybe not in this, in this time element, given COVID nineteen.
Well, that's true, too.
Given down the road is all I'm looking at. I'm looking more like next year or the year after. As long as I can say to the agencies, we're looking at these options, you know?
I think Christine.
And I will, I will share the final review with the school committee. It was so positive. I was so happy.
Christine, one of the things that just we, we've talked a lot about is just setting up the mechanism of the stabilization account. Even if we're not able to put funds in it, at least we have that, that mechanism and the account set up. So if we do see funds, we could deposit those into that account.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Christine.
Bye.
Bye, Christine. Thank you.
Okay.
So next in your packet is the FY twenty-one budget calendar. And as Keith shared, the Northborough Town Meeting is scheduled for July eleventh at nine o'clock on the Algonquin Football Field. And on this past Saturday, we successfully had the regional assessment approved by the Southborough Town Meeting. And so we have one more, one more obstacle to overcome, and we're looking forward to putting FY twenty-one in place and having a simple vote at the town meeting. So also in your packet is the FY twenty-one school committee approved amended budget. And that is for your reference. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. So there is no old business of the time. Policy development and distribution. There's two policies in our packet just for distribution. And next is audience sharing.
So just ask that anyone in the audience who would like to share, you can just type in the chat, and then I will promote you to panelists.
While we're waiting for that, I have something I'd like to share.
Ken?
Okay.
Yeah.
As of yesterday, our colleague Dan Kalenda is, is no longer a selectman in Southborough and after nine years, I believe, and at least from the Southborough contingent, I'd like to pass along our, our thanks to him for, for nine years of service on, on the selectmen. I don't know how you did it during, during that board as well as this one, but I'm glad you did. So thanks a lot, Dan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you. I wonder sometimes, too. So, but thank you. It means we, none of us do this for any financial gain, for sure. We give up our time. We give up our evenings. We give up family time to do this. And everyone on this, on this Zoom is doing the exact same thing. So thank you, Paul. But, you know, honestly, you know, we all are doing the same thing. I applaud everyone on this call. So I appreciate that.
Like your free time.
Yeah. Hundreds of hours of extra free time.
Kathy?
Yep.
For the Northborough contingent, I think I can speak that we all appreciate Dan's expertise and his dedication and making sure that he still came, attended the meetings, even though he was double-duting by being the selectman. But thank you for all your expertise in our region and also on the selectmen and the two towns working together. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. And, you know, we, it was a great day yesterday. Democracy spoke and, and a number of people got reelected, which is absolutely wonderful. And there's actually a new addition. And Dan Budka joins here field of, on Assabod Valley. And that was wonderful to see him do a write-in, you know, be a write-in candidate. I loved, absolutely loved seeing our younger residents want to volunteer and give of themselves and their time to make their communities a better place to live. And, you know, kudos to, you know, the, the Budka family and raising wonderful children who are following in their, in their mom and dad's. Congratulations to Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you very much, Dan. That was nice of you to say.
Congratulations to your son, Dan, Paul.
Thanks, Joe.
So Kathy, we have one audience person who'd like to share. Mary Rice DeFosse.
Go ahead. Hi, Mary.
I'm mute. Hi.
How are you?
Fine, thank you. And how are you all?
Good. So you're all set to?
Yes. What is the format exactly?
So if, Mary, if you want to share, you know, your information, that'd be excellent.
Okay, so with this group, let's see. I am an Algonquin graduate. I am presently, currently a professor of French and Francophone Studies at Bates College in Maine. I also teach in programs in American Studies and Africana. And I wrote to you about the petition to change the name of the school. And because I have a certain point of view on it, because although I have white skin privilege, I, I am also of Native American heritage and Algonquin tribe, the Narragansett. And I find that the petition itself is idealistic and well-intentioned. But at the same time, I think that there are lots of parts of that petition that are kind of wrong-headed. One of the things that bothers me the most about the petition to change the name of the school is that the writers tend to talk about Native Americans as them. And so they create a binary of us versus them without taking into consideration that there are people in Northborough and Southborough who have Native American heritage. So that dichotomy of us versus them, they seem to think, for example, let's see if I can have the quote, they, they say that the name Algonquin was stolen from the tribe. And they act as if it's a kind of a trademark to be bought and sold. And I'd like to elaborate on that in a minute. But I wanted to point out that not all Native Americans live on reservations, particularly in the Northeast. The people of Native American heritage are part of mainstream society. But this isn't just in the Northeast. It's, it's nationwide. The petitioners, then, they, they seem to other Native Americans. They're not us. They're them. And I'm here. We exist. In fact, I can name about four or five people from my own time at Algonquin who had Native American heritage. And some of them stayed in the local area. They had children who went to Algonquin, and their grandchildren are now in the local schools. Whether they'll be at Algonquin or not, it depends. They're still very young. I was the valedictorian of the class of nineteen seventy-four. I'm a part of the "we" of Algonquin, of the, of alums and current students. But at the same time, I'm not, according to this petition. I'm somebody who is other. And that's not true. And what I think is the problem is that there's a conflation of the name, the mascot or the tomahawk, and maybe some behaviors surrounding what happens at sports events. Let's see. I, I think of the name Algonquin as, in Native American terms, for example, not as a trademark, but Native Americans use names to tell stories about a place. And for, for the name Algonquin, I think it tells the story that there were peoples who spoke Algonquian languages in Northborough, in what are now Northborough and Southborough, long before any colonial settlers ever arrived. And to change the name is, is an act of erasure. It's making something that should be visible, invisible. And I think that the petitioners don't see that, because they, they are tied up in other issues that involve the name of the tomahawks and maybe some of the cultural appropriation that's been going on at games or whatever. I think that this is a teachable moment. I'm an educator, and I think that I, you know, there are, there are many, many Facebook posts about this petition, both for and against. But I think that it would be really important, instead of changing the name, to maybe add some course content that deals with the heritage of place. There are amazing stories about the interactions between colonial settlers in what was then Marlborough. And, you know, to get some sort of an understanding of those interactions, I think is really important. That's basically what I wanted to say. I think opening up a dialogue is far richer than just erasing our past. And it's a shared past. So that's, that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Mary, very much for coming on. I know I read your email, and, and I found it very insightful.
I mean, it's something that I, you know, work on as, as a professor. You know, I, I work on the construction of cultural identities and on issues of social justice and equity. And I'm just hoping that you'll see a path that threads a needle, that, that, you know, the name doesn't necessarily have to go in order to open up this dialogue about how do we avoid inappropriate behaviors? So.
Well, thank you for hearing your opinion. I appreciate it.
So I don't know if you have any questions with me, or, I know you've had a very long meeting, so I don't want to.
So because, so because this particular item was not on our agenda, we can't ask questions. We can listen to, you know, what you have to say, but we're hoping to meet with the petition, the people who wrote the petition, and, and sit down and have, you know, a good, a good conversation, a teachable conversation with them.
That's great. I mean, they're clearly idealistic. They're clearly, their hearts are in the right place. But I think that they're conflating a lot of different kinds of issues.
Right.
And one of those issues is an erasure. You know, they, they want to, you know, just eliminate the name. And I, I'm a little troubled that on Facebook, there was some reference to being embarrassed about going to a school that's named Algonquin. And I don't think that that, I think that stems from a, a certain ignorance and a certain tendency to not want to address issues of race, to rather focus on, you know, themselves and on whiteness, but not to talk about anything, not to talk about racial difference and so on. So.
Well, again, thank you for giving us your opinion. We appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. And good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
Kathy, I also have audience sharing if.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So I have something that is sort of related to Mary's. So I do have like a one-minute just statement I'd like to make. So I think it would be remiss to fail to mention the Black Lives Matter protests happening recently across our country and also in our communities. So the past few weeks, as our nation has been grappling with the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery, a spotlight has highlighted the systemic racism that's intertwined in pretty much every aspect of our daily lives. So as a school community that is predominantly white, the reality is that our community has so much more to learn about systemic racism, microaggressions, and the whitewashing of curricula. One of our goals as a school committee and as a school community is to graduate students who are ready to face the world with the skills, tools, and intellect to treat all people with respect, stand up for what they believe in, and add positive change to the world in which they live. Without a conscious effort by our school community to include conversations, lessons, and experiences that will help our students grow into anti-racist individuals, our school community is not doing all we can to support our students. So conversations about race, inclusivity, and tolerance are already taking place in many of our classrooms, especially in the Algonquin elective history class, Race in America. It makes the most sense to talk about racism in history classes, but I believe that teaching about racism can't just fall on the backs of our history teachers. There are places and times in every classroom to learn about and discuss important issues such as these. So my call here tonight is one of action. I'm honestly not entirely sure what that action would look like. It could be a curriculum review, focus groups with students, a study into how other communities have implemented these conversations about race into their curriculum and into their classrooms. And maybe it's just starting the conversation by asking the question, what more can we do to educate our students about the injustices of systemic racism in our country? So regardless of how we proceed, I really hope that our district So regardless of how we proceed, I really hope that our district makes ourselves uncomfortable as we dive into the necessary conversations about race in our country and also in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Again, because it's not on our agenda, we can't, we can't go further than that, but I do, but I appreciate that. Does anyone else have anything? So our next is personnel.
You have the distribution of the personnel report. And Sean Bevan, principal, will be getting his work as a principal of Algonquin Regional High School on July 1. And we have Emma, chemistry teacher, effective August 31st. A great hire, and then a leave of absence. And then Carol, team, our retirement, who's been an administrative assistant, effective, and her retirement's effective June 30th, so we wish Carol well. And then lastly, we have Jen Henry, who was a district-wide ECBA, and she is our early childhood coordinator for the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. She, so she remains with us, just in a different role.
Kathy, I have a question for Greg.
Yep.
Greg, I recently saw that there's an open position at Algonquin for a choral position. Is that in addition to a current position, or is it a replacement?
So it's, we had an unexpected opening at Algonquin. We had a longstanding choral teacher who is moving across country for family reasons. And we are, we have posted that position to fill her shoes in, in her role as a music teacher at Algonquin.
Thank you. I think she'll be sorely missed.
Okay, communications.
So we have Northborough Board of Selecting proclamation. So I can't find it, but I have it here on my desk. So basically, the town of Northborough, Massachusetts, the Select Board issued a proclamation to our Algonquin Regional High School seniors. And I'll just read it into record. Says, whereas the month of June is traditionally the month when high school graduation occurs across the nation. And whereas the high school graduating class of 2020 has experienced the dramatic interruption of their educational and social lives due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas graduating seniors at Algonquin Regional High School and Assabon Valley Regional Technical High School have worked hard to graduate despite the challenges of completing the school year in virtual classrooms. And whereas these young individuals have had to give up so many things that make high school memorable. Sports, field trips, theatrical performances, concerts, club activities, social activities, and graduation ceremonies. And whereas Northborough High School seniors have overcome these disappointments and have demonstrated their commitment to education and their faith in the future. And whereas the class of 2020 graduates deserve their achievements to be recognized by the people within their community and beyond. We now therefore proclaim the month of June 2020, Northborough High School Seniors Month. So, and that's signed by the Select Board members. So I think it was a nice, a nice gesture on the Board of Selecting.
That's really nice. I like that. Okay, the next is approval of bills and payroll. I think we're all set with that, right?
Correct.
And agenda items for next month. So we do have to have a July meeting. Because Northborough doesn't have their election until next week. So Greg is gonna, we're gonna try to do a doodle poll to find a date that works in July. So the agenda items are the election of officers, the 2000, 2021 Subcommittee Assignments. And also, Lauren, to your statement, I actually think it makes sense to, to put a group together, a working group, to figure out, you know, what we can do to make our students more aware of what's going on in the world today. And my daughter actually took Race in America and thought that that would be such a great class for every kid to take. As well as Silent Voices, which is another great class that, that she thinks that every kid would be, you know, should sign up for just because it makes you aware of what's going on and it, and you have conversations. You know, about, it's a, they're difficult conversations. So I think as a school committee, it would make sense at some point to put a board together, a working board, to figure out what, what we can do.
And Kathy, I would just encourage you and others, I mean, there are lots of topics that each individual student, 1,500 students, would like every other student to be aware of and to know about. So I don't know where this goes or where it stops, but we have to be mindful of, there are 1,500 students, all of whom probably have different ideas, different thoughts on things that they want to make sure that everyone in the community understands about them, their situation, the world, you know, so it's.
I agree. Yeah.
So we gotta be just, I would, I think we just have to be careful about, you know, if a student says everyone needs to do X. You know, we gotta be mindful of that. We have 1,500 students who may want 1,500 other students to do X.
Kathy, I think we need to put that on the agenda and create a working group too. I agree. I think Greg said it well in his letter to the community. I think, I, I think there needs to be an opportunity to review what's, what messages and what the curriculum is, what materials are, and what are implicit and explicit communications being given to students and, and how the most important thing is for kids to be able to critically think, and they need to be aware of themselves and others. Not just about what's happening in the world, but about themselves and how they think and examine themselves. And I think we, we, you know, owe it to our, our community. We can't teach about everything, you know, every minute thing, but we can teach to problem-solving, cultural proficiencies, and understanding, like, thinking processes and, and what's, and how to examine different sides of issues. So I, I think whatever form that takes, I think it, we owe it to the students to, to start a dialogue and a review process. And, and again, I think Greg, you said it well in your letter about your own leadership team doing the same.
And Greg, you may need to address this right now, it sounds like. So I don't think your message to the community was meant in any way to state that Algonquin has some, you know, major issues that it has to deal with. And that we live in communities that are not tolerant of others and that are, you know, that, that our students are, you know, racist in, in any way, that our administration is not tolerant of all races, religions, backgrounds, ethnicities. I don't think that was in any way what your message sought to, to, to promote. So you may need to address this right now because it sounds like this conversation is going in a different way, that there is something dramatically wrong in Northborough and Southborough that needs to be fixed.
And I think that at our next combined meeting, we have the strategic plan, the reauthorization of the strategic plan. And part of the work to come to that, that document was really thinking about what is a portrait of a graduate. You know, when, when our students leave our organization, Algonquin, what types of citizens do we want to create and develop? You know, citizens who can advocate, who have a sense of agency, who can problem-solve, who can think critically, who are empathetic, who are caring and kind. Those attributes in that work is not, is not unique to the work that has, has been in place at Algonquin for many years. There's always work in terms of helping students understand the world around them, whether it's the cultural diversity or linguistic diversity. And that's part of the work that we need to do. In terms of evaluating curriculum and, and looking at what we can do better, the beauty about education is that you're never done. The work is never done. There's always work to be, to be improved upon. I do not, did not, in my letter, ever want to indicate that I thought that, to Dan's point, that I thought there was systemic issues around racism. There is work to be done in developing understanding, helping our students understand the world around them. So, you know, and that was my point. And we need to look inward and outward. And part of that is beginning with looking at the curriculum, looking at experiences students have, entering into dialogue and discourse with what our faculty and staff. And in continuing the work of improving the experiences our students have.
And just to piggyback off of what Greg said, I think it's worth noting to the committee that that dialogue has already started. Though school ended yesterday, we've already started dialogue. And Kathy Carmini has led that effort with a number of students involved and, and kind of the, the activities going on outside of school in the towns of Northborough and Southborough. So that dialogue has already started. Kathy, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that.
Sure. Thank you, Andy. We, I was able to reach out to those students that had organized the rally in Northborough and just congratulated, congratulated them and then offered them the ability to continue that conversation with us at Algonquin. And they were thrilled to have that opportunity. And we met this past Monday. They had really done a lot of great work and talked about what they wanted to see at the school. And they talked about curriculum changes they might want, or just changes that we may need to think about with discipline. And so, you know, we, we're going to continue that conversation. We have, we're bringing some more people to the table. We have the department chairs from the English Department and the Social Studies Department in our next meeting. As well as all of the administration in, for the school. So that, that way, we really, we're really, everyone's listening and we're having a great conversation and we're moving forward.
I could try to hear. I'm glad to hear that. I totally agree with Greg and Lauren and Sean that this is, is an issue that we, we need to look at. And frankly, I fully expected to do it anyway, even before, you know, while the unrest in the last couple of weeks, as Greg said, having been involved in the portrait of a graduate and the, and the whole strategic planning process, it was clear that that was going to drive some curriculum changes anyway. So I think it's just continuing that discussion.
So just a last comment. I think that obviously, this, this topic needs its own agenda item. And although it wasn't on the agenda for this evening, you know, I think, I think Kathy, you had mentioned adding it as an agenda item, or maybe Sean. So then really having a deeper dialogue, if it's the will of the committee, around, you know, what is it exactly that we're, we're doing in terms of moving the work forward and developing cultural competency in our faculty and staff. And the other thing is, it's also an opportunity to talk about the work that was well underway prior to the events over the past month, that the development of empathy and tolerance and inclusion and equity, or conversations that, that faculty and staff at Algonquin and throughout the district and the leadership team have been engaged in. Not because of a reaction to current events, because it's, it's ongoing work that we have engaged in and we will continue to engage and potentially will accelerate some of that work. But this is not a new conversation and a new topic for the faculty and staff and the leadership team. And there was work to be done.
And I think that's a great point, Greg. And when you find things where, that are deficient, I trust that you and the administration root that out immediately.
That is accurate.
So do we want to add this to our July meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else to add to it? If you do, if anyone has anything, just you can email me. So we have our last motion. Dan?
Moved.
A motion to adjourn. So Dan Kalenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Paul Desmond. Just think about this. We only have two more meetings to do this at.
Kathy, I'm not sure if you're the most excited about the July meeting.
All right, Kathleen Halland.
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Paul Bucka, left. Paul Desmond?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Karen Ayers?
Yes.
All right, guys. Have a, have a great weekend. Happy Father's Day to all of you guys.
Is this Lauren's last meeting with us, or does she continue?
I think I'll be, well, I'll be at the combined meeting right next week.
So thank you for joining the past, like, few months. It's been nice having you.
It's been really nice. Thank you, everyone.
Very much so, Lauren. Let's have a walk.
Thank you. Sounds good.
All right, good night, everybody.